And I'll wait for your answer. And start with pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is the approval of the agenda, and I have one clarification on the board. It says 10:15. Our papers show 12:15 for resolution set hearing amendment to finally.
Also says PM. Yeah, I don't think yours is going to be at 10:00 PM.
But 12:15 PM we want.
Not here.
Not 10:15 PM.
I think you should.
At 10:00.
I'd have to get some better help, I think.
So I do have that clarification. I know ours says 12:15, so it's just an error there, I believe. Do I hear a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with correction of the time.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It's not on the agenda.
Your agenda, your agenda, that's.
Well, I put it down anyway then.
You don't have to.
Alright, sorry. Next is approval of minutes of October 19.
I'll make a motion to approve last week's minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment totaling $50,523.09.
I will make a motion to approve the claims for payment for this week.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have a 10-02 public hearing. I will go ahead and open the public hearing on the animal feeding operation construction permit simmering site, section seven of Sherman Township. Is there any public that would like to speak on behalf of that? Hearing no public comments, I will go ahead and close the public hearing on the animal feeding operation construction permit simmering site, section seven, Sherman Township. Confirm.
So, the matrix will be completed tomorrow, so without that, I would like to table the recommendation on the animal feeding operation for simmering site, section seven, Sherman Township. Table it till next week, November 2nd.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is acknowledged receipt of DNR determination Dunn site, section 35 of Alden Township.
I will make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the DNR determination for the Dunn finisher site in section 35 Alden Township.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is acknowledged receipt of DNR determination Owassa site, section 15 of Jackson Township. And on this one, we've talked about it a lot. I did talk to the DNR this morning. The questions we had about the drainage district is in his paperwork, and we just need to have the drainage engineer send a letter stating that when it's acceptable, and he will make sure on his side. So he was fine with us acknowledging this at this time.
Yeah, I called him last week too, so that's good that they proceeded forward with that. Excellent. So I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of DNR determination for the Owassa finisher site, section 15, Jackson Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So that, that means that they can, I mean that the.
They'll be able to build.
They'll be able to build, but they won't be able to put the hogs in it until the drainage issue has been resolved, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I got Joe here on behalf of the city of Ackley on the county shed.
Thank you for your time. I'm here to present you. We went down a feature that didn't deem to be a good asset to our city's street department, so I'm here to offer a proposal of $15,000 for the building on behalf of the city of Ackley.
Darrell, are you here? Do you have any comments or anything?
Nothing right now, hope.
Okay.
Do you prefer we sell it, or do you prefer that rent it, or?
You're using it for salt storage?
Yep, yes. Not, well, our city's street department's going to be using it.
Okay.
For dump trucks and stuff like that. It'll be heated. We're going to keep it heated. We're going to maintain it just as it is.
Gotcha, yep.
I mean, I'd suggest that we accept the proposal and then meet some more on this and see what we think. If it's acceptable or any other choices. Would it be something that if we do want to sell it, do we feel that we owe it to the public to open it up to bids? 15,000 or is 15,000 acceptable dollar amount for that? What do you guys feel?
Well, this is a nice start. We do need to look through the contract and see if this is the way we want to go. There has been discussion that we would like to either sell or rent, so, so, yeah, I appreciate, appreciate the proposal, and we'll take time and look through it.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Do you have a data as to how long that proposal would be good for?
Mike put it in there. Mike Smith do it up. It's in there someplace.
Okay.
I'm sure it's in there somewheres.
Okay.
That will give us time to look through it and see what, but, yeah, we.
Right, right.
Okay.
We'll move forward on this rather quickly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Get back to you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Just, do we need a motion just to accept it then, at this point, or?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal and with further review to see, to make a decision later.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, they accepted it. That's what the motion said.
Wait, what?
Just to recieve it.
Never mind us.
Next is continuation of a contract with Amanda Winters for sanitaryian-related services. And this is one where she is a sanitarian at this time. We do have a sanitarian onboard. She hasn't been doing a lot of leach fields, and we want to continue her until the end of December, if I were.
Amanda, yeah. Yeah, we've basically updated the last one and just changed the dates and had it good for 60 days, and that'll basically take us to the end of the year when the ground will be frozen. So it'll pretty much catch the rest of the construction season or the work season until next spring.
Makes sense.
And that'll give it just some time to make sure she's ready to take over the inspection duties.
Okay. Alright, well, I will make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement between Hardin County and Amanda Winters for providing the sanitarian-related services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is pest, which is bedbugs, control fund policy. Thing came up to us last week and looking for some type of policy that we could probably help out with some people, and we had them throw something together. I don't know if we can get it through today or not, but let's go ahead and talk about it.
Here's a copy of the, that's the proposal that I sent a copy to the board, but we have, through my department, we've seen a lot of, an increase in the issues with bedbugs in Hardin County, and I think we've all seen things in the news, you know, that there's been an infestation in Iowa in certain areas. I don't know if it's an indication that it's just been an ongoing problem, or if we really have a bigger problem right now than we used to here in Hardin County, but the way it started to really impact our department is we actually had some people who are participating in our program, in our friendship club, who are affected, who were having to make decisions on, okay, we're telling people they can't come anymore because, as we all know, they're easy to get transferred from one area to another. You bring your, you know, your jackets at home infested, and you go somewhere else, and they're in your pockets or bags or things like that. So what, what I talked a little bit to the board about and am proposing is that we would set up a fund of up to $5,000 specifically for bedbugs at this time, and we would do it through our GA department, so we would have them fill out our GA application. It would be like a revolving fund so that, which we do this a lot with our GA clients is we send them a fund repayment, so it'd be like a loan, and, you know, they may pay back only 25, $50 a month, but because what we're finding is, you know, just a lot of these people that either their, their income is disability of, you know, some of them it's, you know, SSI is about 700 a month, so they cannot afford to pay anywhere from 400 on up for treatment, and it depends on, you know, heat treatment can be as much as like $2,000, but chemical treatment, which I talked to the guy Shield who does the county's pest control, and he says that they've had good luck with chemicals, and that runs about $400 for a small house. But along with that too, I've, you know, some stuff from EPA, says you do have to do integrated management, so it's the chemicals, but it's also, you know, they have to remove the, sometimes you need to remove the furniture, whatever it is that's infested, and remove clutter, and, you know, your clothes have to be completely washed at a high temperature to get rid of them. So we would also ask people then to probably sign something that they're agreeing that they will participate in, not just getting the chemicals paid for, but that they will do the other things they need to do to get them under control. And I think, you know, we have other pests that are, I mean, we could spend lots of money, but to me, I'd like to just focus on this one issue right now, see how it goes, do it on a first-come, first-served, and then, you know, down the road, if you wanted to expand it to other things, I know there's, you know, we have other pests that could be public health issues, but this one specifically, the EPA says it's a health issue because for one thing, you know, the bedbugs bite people, and I mean, I've seen one person who was infested, and he literally had like sores on both arms, you know, he sleeps in his sofa which is infested with them, and you can, you know, some people react also to those bites too, so you can get really sick from it, and it is, you know, it's a big issue, and I think it's not just the low-income poor people, but, I mean, I've heard some of the nicest hotels, I've talked to a hotel manager who said there's not a hotel anywhere that hasn't dealt with bedbugs, so, but in this case, we're just basically allowing some money to help those people who can't afford to do it on their own, who can't come up with the $400 to do it. You know, I'm thinking if they were, get social security, we would still ask them to do a repay, but maybe 25 a month. We would maybe make an exception if somebody had absolutely no income, you know, if there's no way they would ever be able to pay it, but most people, I think, would pay it back.
Is, is this anything that, I know one of the things that was brought up, if, if they're treated once, or I mean, if they get the, receive the funding once, are they allowed to get it a second time, or is this just a?
Well, this says a household is eligible for up to 600, so, you know, if they did it for 400 and then maybe had to do it again, maybe we could do half, and we could adjust that too. I mean, because I think sometimes it does take, it would take two treatments, or maybe they'd be able to come up with a little bit of money on their own first time and the second time. I think he just, when I talked to Shield, I mean, basically, he just said, you got to treat it, and then he goes back after a certain period of time and checks again, and.
But is it, I mean, we have, there's such a huge issue with it, you know, throughout the county.
Yeah.
I would just hate to see it only being used by repeat.
Yeah. Well, I think this does limit it, you know, per household, and then.
Okay, okay.
And the other thing I didn't mention is what's in the policy is, you know, 150% of poverty, so they would have to be at, which, you know, for, I think for a single person, 150% is like 1,400 a month, so they have to be under that in order to even qualify.
Couple of questions. If it's going to be handled through the friendship club, could it be funded, could it be funded through Fund 10 and/or general fund and/or if, if 5,000 isn't going to handle the situation, can we talk funding from both because they're kind of two different entities?
Yeah, the reason I did it this way was just because we need to, you know, in some of these cases, we need to act fairly quick, but it would be, so it would be out of general assistance, which is general fund. So that's county general fund money. You know, we could go to the region, but you know how it is with that. I mean, it could take months to get something done and approved, but we could, you know, if we saw a need for additional money, we could do that, or we could, we could get it started and then still go to the region and ask for some funding there.
One of the options we have is community betterment under lost funds, local option sales tax and community betterment. We talked about that a little bit, and we can talk about it here. It is funds that, that the supervisors could choose to use for this. It is a repayable balance, granted, we understand that's the intent of it, is that we lend it and they repay it back.
I'm not in favor of lost funds.
We kind of tie, we kind of tie community betterment along with economic development, and if it leads to an economic, helps prosperous economically, and this wouldn't, if we were reassured paybacks, that'd be another issue too, but, but I'm not sure if we could reassure paybacks on that.
I would, I would prefer if it, you know, it either be the general fund and/or Fund 10, if that would be a possibility, but, I mean, there's been nothing budgeted for it, but I would, I would prefer general fund if it's going through general assistance.
And I think, you know, I pulled out the monthly report for the budgets, and I mean, under our general assistance budget, we're doing pretty good right now, so, I mean, if we added a line item, you know, we could get started and do it out of our general assistance budget, but with the understanding that, you know, when it gets to be spring, and if we, that wasn't built into budget when we did it, so we may not need the whole 5,000, but you might have to amend and do it for a lesser amount based on that, and that way we could track it from now until next June.
I would be willing to go that route, and just, I mean, if we have to amend then, hopefully it wouldn't be for the whole five, but it would definitely get it started a lot quicker, I think, and.
And one reason I would rather have it, you know, it's a separate policy, and it says, you know, basically, when the money runs out, it runs out. I don't want to make it a permit part of our general assistance policy because then we're tying in forever, you know, to fund it, and this may be something we can deal with this year and.
Well, I think it's a way to get it started anyway, and I know I want to do some further checking to see if there's anything that the Department of Public Health is ever going to consider funding, or if there's any grant funds or anything to be used for that type of thing, but I'm not aware of anything right now, but, so I myself would prefer to go that route if you're willing to, Lynn, as far as using the 5,000 from your general assistance budget, and then if it needs to be amended, doing that in the spring.
I'd really appreciate as we move forward, reports back to see how this program, if it's really helping or not, and hopefully it does. Hopefully it's not just a Band-Aid for a short period of time and then we end up with issues, but I, yeah, I feel for the people that are struggling with the issue right now.
And I don't, I think it would be nice if, and maybe the friendship club's already done this, as far as providing some education to those people regarding how, I mean, once they're gotten rid of.
Yes.
How they can.
Not be reinfested.
Right. So there's an educational part that goes along with it that I think.
Yeah, we've done some of that already and will continue to do, but again, you know, I don't want people to think it's just.
No.
Just a certain group of people, because.
No.
I mean, there's a lot of, I've heard reports from people who stay in the fanciest hotels that get them too, so.
No.
But it is, but the issue is that those people that do get it, they're low-income or with disabilities that can't afford to pay for the treatment.
Right, right. No, they're definitely not the only ones, because I've had reports from other places, still trying to figure out how to handle those. It's really nobody's, there's really no department out there that provides any funding or does any of that. I mean, it's just the educational portion of it, but no funding.
And as I've done some reading, I know more now about bedbugs than I ever thought I would need to know, but, I mean, it is in the same families like lice. Well, you know, all of us have dealt with that too in the past, and the schools and everything, but at least with that, you know, you can go to the drugstore and buy a little jar of something and treat at home, and you can usually take care of it, where this takes such a, you know, expensive to get rid of it.
Right. I mean, because along with the bedbugs, I've had the report with, of cockroach problems or infestations, and all of these things, there's treatment for it, but there's also an education that needs to go behind and on how to, how to stay clear of them, so. I would make a motion to approve the pest, bedbugs, control fund policy, funding that out of the general fund at this point in time.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, keep us informed on how it progresses.
I got one guy that's been calling me every day.
Doesn't progress.
I'll wait till, at least till today, till I get a decision, so.
When you say general fund, you're talking Lynn's general fund.
Yeah, the general fund.
Which GA is pretty much all in general.
Hey Lynn, I'm not sure if you know, but there's a local guy in I have a boss that does pest control too.
And we put in here, it can be anybody, you know, approved, so it doesn't have to just, yeah.
The only reason I said that is because he isn't a corporation like the big ones, you know. He's the same as Shield, so his rates may vary slightly just because of who he is as opposed to who the other companies are. Are you going to supply like the list of people who just take, you know, with no recommendation, but local businesses that they can ask for services? Because sometimes that's usually the next question when people do this, well, okay, so who do I call, you know?
And I thought it'd be more like somebody's, you know, we can provide a list.
Yeah, as I say, you know, alphabetize it.
Put a list together.
Priority, that kind of thing.
I would prefer to have that done too, because you don't want to just have somebody say, well, my friend's going to bring in some spray cans and spray.
Well, and it says it has to be licensed.
Yeah, okay.
And I kind of thought people would come to us and say, but we can give them the list. I just didn't want to be exclusive and say, okay, you have to go to this person or this person, but, I mean, we can do a list, and then if they want to do it with somebody else, we would check them out before we would approve it, make sure they're reputable and licensed.
Does the bill come directly to you in those scenarios?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We never pay, you know, we always pay the provider directly. We don't give it to them.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is set time and date to receive bids on county home farm and conservation land lease.
Thanks, Lynn. I will set the date and time for November 16th at 10:02 to receive bids for county home farm conservation land lease.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
You said the 16th?
Yes.
Okay.
The two-year contract is up on that. They did send us a termination notice, notifying us that they did not want to farm it again at that rate, and we will, we can go ahead and open the backup for bids.
Are you sending that to paper?
Yes.
And this is for a two-year lease?
Should be a two-year, two-year lease for both the county home and the conservation ground.
Okay.
It's a little less acres than last time, and they were taking some acres off for, on the conservation side.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a WageWorks flexible benefit agreement for 2017. Following survey collects critical information, WageWorks needs to prepare the proper lease service for your program for the upcoming plan year.
I will make a motion to approve the WageWorks flexible benefits agreement for 2017.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a change of status sheriff's office.
I will make a motion to approve change of status for the sheriff's office. Terry Chase, correction officer, 1286 per hour, and this is a permanent part-time hire.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It's just, it's the hiring as of October 26th.
26th.
No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is consultant designation and authorization form with Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
We have a new representative for, that will be handling our account, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and that is Tom Schutz and Lori Lambert, so I would make a motion to approve the consultant designation and authorization form.
And I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, well, Ms. Kim, she was good.
Yes, she was, very good.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permits. Anything for roads?
Two more intersections to build up down south, and we're having three new employees starting next Monday. Safeways in.
Okay. Change of status, engineer's office. I did not get a copy of that.
I've got those.
Okay.
I will approve the change of status for Chad Keely, truck driver. This is a full-time and resignation. Last day of work was 10:10 of this year.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? He went to a new job. I hope he enjoys it.
City Walden, I think, was the name.
Maynard Sky there.
Oh, alright.
City superintendent, or whatever they call it.
Good. Wish him well.
Yes.
Well, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the change of status for Clint Reince, truck driver, $20.45 an hour, full-time hire, 10:3116 for starting.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'd like to approve the change of status for Mark Oliver, heavy equipment operator, twenty dollars, six-six cents an hour, full-time hire, ten thirty-one sixteen will be a starting date.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve change of status for Trent Mockstead, Mockstead, truck driver, twenty dollars, forty-five cents an hour, full-time hire and starting ten thirty-one sixteen.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. From there, do we have any other business?
I do. I wanted to let you guys know that our new website has gone live yesterday, so same, same web address, hardincountyia.gov, but it's switched over, we're doing kind of a soft opening, just making sure all the bugs are worked out beforehand. And there will be an accompanying app to go along with it and when that's available, we're still finishing that up, I'll talk to the newspapers and we'll put some marketing materials out there.
Good. I'll have to go check it out.
Any other business? Can I get a clarification on one, Nancy? My mind's wandering on that, on that, Joe Wessels, where we accepted the proposal, how did that work?
I know what I said, but how, how's it in the...
Accept proposal with further review to make the decision.
Okay. I just want to be clear on it. Any other business? Hearing none, all in favor, or from there, I can ask for adjournment.
You can just recess till, you have a twelve fifteen.
Oh, that's good.
Then I will ask for recess till twelve fifteen.
I'll make a motion to recess until twelve fifteen.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Sticking around, you guys, until twelve fifteen. It's twelve fifteen, I'm going to reconvene the meeting and we have a resolution to set hearing on amendment to Pine Lake Urban Renewal Plan.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution, setting the date of November thirtieth at ten oh two for the public hearing on the proposed 2016 amendment to the Pine Lakes ethanol urban renewal area and plan.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? The chairperson announced that the amendment to the Hardin County Plan for Pine Lake Ethanol Urban Renewal Area has been prepared and that it was now necessary to set date for public hearing, okay, should have read that earlier, huh? Now, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Any other business? Hearing none, I can ask for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.